We'll see, we'll get that boat out, we'll do it, even if we have to drive people there ourselves. Yeah, of course, it was nice to meet you Kathy. Hi Temple, did you get my text the other day? That's okay, no, don't worry about it, I just wanted to make sure that you got the text, I'm sorry. Friday just got away from me. Um, but yeah. Oh my god, I'm sure, that's totally fine, but I, I, you know, I did a little bit of reading on Moms Demand Action after we weren't able to touch base, so. It was a good reminder to look into some of that stuff anyway, so.
This is, this is our.
Whoa. Oh, great. I love a good acronym. That's one of the easiest ways to remember anything, thank you. Oh, I'm Clara.
Hi Clara, I'm Jean Benfro.
Oh Jean, nice to meet you, yeah, yeah. And I. Ryanen, like the bread, Rynen, yep. I always say if you just switched around the Y and the E, it'd be super easy. But the order can be confusing, so, yeah. Oh, yeah, I know, I always. Yeah, well, the, I, especially like when I'm using like voice to text on my phone or something, especially like. You know, I've been talking so much about these meetings and like every time I say like Jeff Bruin with like voice to text, it just like completely misspells it. So I don't even know where I try to use it because I never can send it until I get to the place I was going to. Can actually edit it, but I guess it's not that counts. Of course, yeah, I'm really excited, thanks for introducing yourself. Hi. Oh, nice to meet you, yes. You're welcome, sorry, yeah, but also, yeah, exactly, also thanks for organizing all this, that's more important than your glasses, I like.
Yeah, good to see you again, and thanks for all your work.
Hi, yes, hi, nice to meet you, I got, I'm like, I feel like I know you from meeting now, but it's really nice to know.
Uh, yeah, well, thanks for the information.
Yes, thank you for doing this, yeah, that's great.
And, welcome to the candidates. As a courtesy to all present, please, please silence your cellphones. Okay. So, please silence your cellphones before we start tonight. This is the Iowa City City Council Candidate Forum. All candidates in the contested elections have been invited to participate in this forum. I am Nancy Deeds and a member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County and I will be the moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside this room following the forum, but no buttons, signs, or literature can be worn or distributed inside this room. The League supports the free and open exchange of ideas through civil discourse. We ask that no questions or outbursts come directly from the audience. Please hold any applause until the end of the forum. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership in the League is open to anyone sixteen years of age and older. Join us, we can use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. You can find us online. You can find us online at LWVJC.org for instructions on how to join. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with one from the League, followed by questions submitted on cards by you in the audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils for you to write questions. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up the cards and a League member will collect them throughout the forum and bring them to me to read. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each question will be asked of all candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals. And as we near eight thirty and the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. The speaking order will rotate throughout the evening. League member Maureen Braddock will serve as timekeeper and use cards to alert candidates when their time is almost up and when it is up. In the November fourth election, all voters in the city may vote for the two at-large seats and for the district seat. Four candidates are running for the at-large city council seats, two will be elected in the November fourth election. The four candidates for the at-large seats are Newman Abuissa, Megan Alter, Clara Ryanen, and Bruce Teague. Two candidates are running for the District B seat, one will be elected in the November fourth election. The two candidates for the District B seat are Sean Harmson and Amy Hospodarsky. Audience members, please write your questions on the cards provided and pass them to League members, although we got a lot of them here already. Candidates, as we begin with opening statements, please speak loudly so audience members can hear you.
May I ask a question? How will we know when our time is up?
If you watch Maureen.
Okay.
Maureen will have a card that shows you one minute left, thirty seconds left, and then stop.
Thank you.
Okay, the two-minute opening statements will start with Newman Abuissa. Go ahead and make your opening statement, Newman.
My name is Newman Abuissa and I want to thank the League of Women Voter. It's really a high bar for me to reach, I'm the newest probably American on this table here. I am an immigrant from Syria, came to this country almost forty years ago, and I went to school in South Dakota and became a civil engineer. I worked for the Iowa Department of Transportation for thirty-five years, retired last December, and I have worked with many municipalities throughout the, my work at the Iowa Department of Transportation. And I've seen the dynamics of different cities in eastern Iowa. I worked from Dubuque to Keokawak, my area was eastern Iowa and southeastern Iowa. I am also an activist, I have been an activist for human rights, I, I'm a member of the University of Iowa Center for Human Rights, I was on the Iowa City Commission for Human Rights, and I'm also part of the Democratic Party. I have been a national delegate for John Kerry twenty years ago, that was my, the beginning of my activism, and I also was a national delegate for, for this last time around in Chicago. So, through my activism and through my experience as a transportation engineer, I think the Iowa City is a great place to live. I lived here, raised my family, raised all four of my, all four of my kids here, went to City High, and went, I guess, somewhere else, one of them stayed here in Iowa City, and two of them are in Iowa City now. One of them came to Iowa City and I see many challenges in the new generation. And I think the Iowa City can, can be a better place, and that's why I'm running, to provide my vision for Iowa City. And that is something I'm really passionate about, I love Iowa City, it's a great place to live, and I think we can do better. And that's why I'm running, and I would love to have your vote, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Megan Alter, your opening statement.
Thank you. I actually wrote some things out, so my son actually texted me to say, get off your phone, and I'm like, I'm also reading a lot of stuff. My name is Megan Alter, and I'm currently one of your city councilors. Thank you to everyone for taking the time to be here and also for the League of Women Voters for providing this opportunity. A little bit about me, I moved here in nineteen ninety-five to complete my PhD in English Literature. After that, I was a visiting professor for five years, and then I moved over to ACT as a writing specialist. Fifteen years later, I am now a Director of Academic Content in English Language Arts. I've got two teenage children and live in the South District. I'm running for reelection because I want to make sure that local government works for its residents. Everyone deserves a community they love, where they know they are valued, and that they know their representatives care about them. Elections are often about change, I get that. And right now, the imperative to do something in the face of threats, tumult, and local need is real. What we do and how we do it as local officials matters. As your city councillor, I will never condone or accept unlawful arrests of our residents. I will do my utmost, along with my fellow councillor, to do more than make proclamations. And resistance takes many forms. Drawing attention to the work that we do isn't always the right play. In some instances, it is. Both have their place here. I support a well-functioning government that puts your needs at the forefront of everything we do, and that means we have to be driven by specific contexts and circumstances to make our decisions. I approach my decision-making by considering individual issues while also looking at broader implications of what this means in ten, twenty, thirty years' time. I'm eager to continue providing this perspective. We should collaborate and make decisions after considering all angles as best we can, that is your charge to us. I will work hard to make sure you don't have to work so hard and that you can enjoy living here. Living your life to the fullest is an act of resistance, and I want Iowa City to be part of that joy for you. I will leverage my experience and approach on council, and I hope that you will vote for me when early voting starts October fifteenth and on Election Day, November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Ryanen, your opening statement.
Hi everyone, my name is Clara Ryanen, and I'm running for one of the at-large seats here on City Council. Like others have said already, thanks again to everyone for being here tonight and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. This is an awesome experience and I'm really excited to be here. I'm running for City Council because I think that Iowa City needs more young people to be involved in local government. I've lived here for almost a decade now, I did my undergraduate degree here, and I'm currently in my last year as a graduate student getting my Master's of Fine Arts in Book Arts. I'm also a librarian, and I think that my experience and approach to problem-solving as a librarian would be incredibly useful for City Council. I think that the American Libraries Association's core values for librarians, which are access, equity, intellectual freedom and privacy, public good, and sustainability, are incredibly in line with Iowa City's strategic plan and what Iowa City wants to accomplish for its residents. And if there's one thing that I've learned in my time as a librarian, it's that being a librarian, no matter the fact that you have this like fancy master's degree that you can hang on your wall, being a librarian is about public service and customer service. And I think that that attitude could serve City Council really well. And my goal on City Council would be to make sure that every single resident of Iowa City knows how the city is working, why the city is working the way it does, and ultimately, I want everyone to feel like they are empowered to come to City Council meetings, watch City Council, understand what's going on, and ultimately, be active in making the change that they want to see in their communities. Especially now when we're seeing democracy under increasing threat from the state and federal government. I think a librarian who's trained in protecting access to information is exactly what Iowa City needs. And I'm excited for you all to learn more about my platform, and I'm excited to learn more about how I could serve you. So, thanks again for being here, and I'm excited to be here too.
Thank you. Bruce Teague, your opening statement, and everybody is reminded to make sure they get close to their microphone because we have a good crowd here tonight, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, and I appreciate the League of Women Voters always putting together a great opportunity for people to come together to hear what candidates want to do for their community. As mentioned, I'm Bruce Teague, I've been on, this is my third go-round for City Council. I was first elected in twenty eighteen in the special election, and then this is my third time being a candidate. And one of the things I think about, you know, the why, why do I want to run? I've been in Iowa City since I was seventeen years old, went to West High, went to Kirkwood, went to University of Iowa. And it's a community that raised me. Honestly, I became an adult here. I own a business right now, Carrying Hands and More, where we care for individuals with disabilities, elderly people. We also staff the birdhouse, the hospice house of Johnson County, have primarily since twenty sixteen as inception. And so, my, the core of me is a caregiver, and I believe that my role for this city is just navigating all the things that we have together over the years since twenty eighteen. We all know about COVID and the duratio and all those things that have happened, and now we're at a new juncture in our community and our nation, where federal and state government is really up against us, providing some difficult and strange times that we've never encountered before. I am also the longest-term councillor on the City Council, which is shocking since I'm only twenty-three if anyone asks, but I'm forty-nine. Nevertheless, I will love the opportunity to use my expertise for another round.
Thank you. Sean Harmson, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you to the League and to all of you for being here tonight, and for all of the people that are watching online or be watching this recorded. Your participation in democracy is so, so important. When I got on the council three and a half years ago, we were still in the middle of a pandemic. We were masking up, and in fact, we were meeting right here in this very room to socially distance one from another. Coming out of COVID then, and being on the council right then, not only did I have to work hard to learn what it was to be a council member for a city of seventy-five thousand people, but also had to work together with my fellow council members, city staff, and our community partners and members of the community to figure out what Iowa City was going to look like after COVID and how we were going to use those resources, not just to get back where we were, but to get back somewhere better. Some examples of those decisions that I was proud to work with my colleagues to make include things like the pilot program for the fare-free bus service, include help for the people at Forest View in order to help them relocate when the pandemic killed the project that would have given them new homes. Also, things like infrastructure so that our community can continue to do good things. So, the dream city on the south side of Iowa City, the free medical clinic to expand, and we have a ribbon cutting coming up for that on Wednesday. I'm running again to take that experience and that work ethic and continue to apply it to the new challenges we have from the state and federal government. So I hope to, if the voters of Iowa City are willing to have me keep working for them, I would be proud to continue to do so, and I ask for your vote, either starting next Wednesday on October fifteenth or by November fourth, thank you.
Thank you. Amy Hospodarsky, your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for being here, thanks to the League for hosting. I, my name's Amy Hospodarsky, I have lived in Iowa City since two thousand nine, that time goes quickly. I came here, as many do, with a partner who was finishing school, had no intent to stay, no intent to leave, and here I am many years later because I fell in love, frankly. I got to grow up here similarly to how Bruce said, I think one of my favorite things about Iowa City is if you want to get involved, you can find a way. And pretty quickly, I found myself very involved. I worked the first decade of my professional career in community investment and public relations here in Iowa City. So I got to build a lot of really cool things, I've built big community festivals, I've been on boards, I've served on committees. Boardwork has been deeply influential in the way I see this town, as well as the way I see the world overall. In the past, I was on the board at Community Crisis Services, which at the time was the Crisis Center, if you remember that. I've served on Big Brothers Big Sisters Board, as well as the Engler Theater downtown here. And over those, you know, close to fifteen years of experience, got to learn a lot from different pockets of the community. Currently, I serve on the board of the Affordable Housing Coalition, I'm also the president of the South of Six Business District. So, I've gotten to have my hands in a lot of different things, and those are the things I hope to bring to my experience in Iowa City. If elected, I will bring curious, compassionate leadership. I'll bring courageous and creative problem-solving, which I think is necessary now more than ever. And I will bring a voice for collaborative action to take our plans into real, real life and make progress as we move forward. So, thank you so much for having me, I'd love to have your support as we move forward.
Thank you. The first question tonight is from the League of Women Voters. Both the Johnson County Sheriff's Office and the Iowa City Police Department have critical infrastructure issues, and the county jail is overcrowded and outdated. The initial idea was to create a single facility to house both agencies, saving costs and space compared to building separate facilities. A feasibility study estimated potential savings of more than nine million dollars in construction. In September, the current City Council voted four to three to approve the joint venture, after which the county sheriff announced his opposition to the joint facility. What is your view of the best way to proceed? Mr. Abuissa, if you'll go first.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was aware of this combined effort. We know that the jail has been on the agenda for decades in Iowa City, that's not a new endeavor. We know that we need a new jail, and the current jail is deteriorated. The question was initially about the size of the jail we want for the community, do we want to keep it as big as it is now or make it a little bigger? Anyhow, there was a need at the county level and there was a need at the city level. The city started working with them, I don't know exactly when, but it sounds like for the public, they had public forums only in the last few months. And there was not enough communication between the city of Iowa City and Johnson County. When city of Iowa City approved the combined effort, they learned that the city of Iowa City does not want to use the location which the county wants to use. And then the county sheriff said that he does not want to have the location anywhere else, and he's not willing to work with the city of Iowa City, and he sent a letter to the city saying that he's not interested anymore, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryanen, and remember, we have one minute in this.
Yeah, I was very vocally opposed to the joint facility from the get-go. I am fundamentally opposed to consolidating powers that have the authority to carry lethal force. Even though it wouldn't be combining operations, I did have serious concerns about consolidating police forces into a single building. And ultimately, I think that as far as the Iowa City Police Department goes, just because we're not pursuing the joint facility doesn't mean that Iowa City Police Department doesn't need a new headquarters. That can still happen, and I think giving them their own building and their own place to do that gives them even more opportunities to continue community-engaged services that frankly, I don't see the Sheriff's Department having the same interest in. So I think that having those facilities be separate will actually give the Iowa City Police Department more of an opportunity to engage with the community and to build a trusting relationship that the Sheriff's Office frankly, with its treatment of transgender community members, is not going to be able to achieve. So I'm very happy to see that those facilities are no longer being considered jointly.
Thank you. Mr. Teague.
So I was one of the councillors that actually voted in favor of this, and the reason I voted in favor of the joint facilities to continue is to continue the conversation. So it wasn't going to be a finalized partnership at this juncture, it was more, can we continue the conversation? And I thought that in that moment, it would be worth continuing the conversation because we have a need for a facility, the Iowa City Police Department, and so does the Johnson County Jail. And so, figuring out how can we continue with the discussions, I was also the one that said, yes, I will continue the conversations, but one particular parcel that the city owns, I am not interested in at all for that being the location, and I can talk more about that at a different time.
Mr. Harmson.
Thank you. We knew this has been coming for quite some time, which is why over a year ago, I started attending the public meetings that the county was holding. And at those meetings were people from the city, the county, various mental health advocates, various advocates for the Public Defender's Office, for the Prosecutor's Office, people who had been in the jail. And so this work has actually been going, and it's been going in a. And so this work has actually been going and it's been going in a public manner for a very long time. I also spent some time looking into things like the different claims that people were making, such as does the jail need to be replaced at all? I toured the jail here, I toured the jail in Clinton, Iowa to see a more modern facility. And so that's how I approach something like this. When I know it's going to be a big decision, I put in the work and I put in the effort so I can have the most informed decision possible. I think we missed an opportunity here. I think, you know, to the tune of about nine to $10 million for our taxpayers. And of course, every Iowa City taxpayer is also a Johnson County taxpayer. So since both the city needs a new police department and the county needs a new jail and new sheriff's office, it's kind of a bummer that we missed that opportunity, but we'll move forward because that's what we need to do next.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky.
Yeah, thank you. I think that while the county has decided to move forward separately, the principle for me remains the same when we approach projects like this. I think joint projects in general, but especially joint projects around law enforcement raise some pretty major questions about governance, about operation, about funding. And I think those decisions should be made in a way that is very clearly transparent and based in community input. We have tools like our strategic plan that can be used as a rubric to decide whether or not these are things we move on or not. And I would like to see our council talk about those things more plainly and use our community vision that was built by both council and community members and staff to make decisions rather than use our own personal thoughts and opinions. So my opinion is that when we make big decisions like this, that we do it in a way that is based deeply in community trust, transparency, that we listen first, that we give plenty of time for input, and then we move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
So to remind the question, what is the best way to proceed? I think we absolutely need new facilities for our police department because it's going to help alleviate a lot of overuse in the city hall as it stands right now, not just for the police because their department is incredibly small, cramped and difficult to work in, but also for city workers throughout all of city hall. We've had a facilities plan, go through this and look to, and frankly, the conditions are awful. So I'm in favor of us moving forward. I know that there are plans already in place to look for a new location for the police department in terms of the jail. I was also someone who voted for the jail, believing that for reasons that other colleagues have mentioned, in terms of saving money, that there could be some efficiencies created through the physical location. Those things, they haven't come to pass, but I am in favor of the new jail and please reach out if you need to know more.
Thank you. Our next question is, how will you increase affordable housing in Iowa City for both full-time residents and students? And the first response will be from Ms. Reinen.
Yeah, so I think there are a lot of different ways that we can increase affordable housing here in Iowa City. Housing is definitely the area that I've been working the hardest to educate myself on because I fundamentally believe that housing is a human right. Everyone has a right to a house and to a home. It's just not something that I have had as much professional experience in, so I've been doing a lot to educate myself on that recently. I really believe that permanent supportive housing is the answer to end homelessness that we're seeing here in Iowa City, Johnson County, and in general in the world. I believe that one of the best ways that we can create conditions for affordable housing is by encouraging and supporting the creation and kind of restarting of the Iowa City Tenants Union. I think it's incredibly important that we're giving tenants the opportunity to organize and fight back against abusive landlords when we already have so few mechanisms for how to control them. I think in general, it's incredibly important for city counselors to vocally support tenants, especially in a community like Iowa City where they're so often taken advantage of.
Thank you. Mr. Teague.
So affordable housing has been a strategic plan and a number one priority for many of the counselors on city council and myself included. We've done lots of projects, but one of the things that we're doing right now, and there's a lot of ways to approach affordable housing, but one of the things that we've done is we obtained a 23 point, I know, a $37.5 million grant for pro housing. It's a federal grant. And what this is going to allow the city to do, one is to do some education for consumers that want to purchase houses. But the bigger thing is going to allow the city to be a developer. What we know is that prices for properties are increasing and really is going to be the nonprofit partners that really do make affordable housing a great possibility, although I'm not giving up on our private developers. But with the city becoming a developer, I do think that that really does enhance our opportunity. We'll be looking at other things that we already have in our toolbox, like TIP and some other things, but I think that's going to be a part of our focus.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen.
Thank you. This is one of those that 60 seconds just can't hit it all, but thanks to my colleague, Mayor Teague, for getting us started. So yes, the pro housing grant and the ability for the city to expand and get into the actually development of affordable housing, which will mean permanent affordable housing. We also are doing stuff and will continue to work with zoning to not only get mixed neighborhoods, so we have affordable housing mixed in our current and future neighborhoods, but also to make it streamlined so we can get some developers also as part of this mix and to continue to work on that. One other thing I want to make a plug for is one of, I'm really hoping if I'm back on the council next year, that one of the tools that we get to have starting in July is an increased amount of money from the local option sales tax in order to put that to our affordable housing efforts. And so those will be some big decisions whoever's on the council hopefully will be able to make if that passes. And to continue all of those, plus looking at all the supportive services for people who are struggling to stay in their homes as well as those who find themselves without a home.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky.
Thank you. The housing crisis that we're facing is giant. In Iowa City, the stat that I keep hearing as a member of the Coalition Board is that in order to keep up with the need for housing, Iowa City would have to create a unit every single day, every single day to keep up. We're not even close to that, is the unfortunate truth. So how, what do we do? Short term, I think it means that we continue to invest and allocate money into our affordable housing fund, not only protect that money, but increase it as our affordable housing plan calls us to do. Also, for the longer term, I think the reality for housing is that the major barrier is cost. So we need to look at ways that we can subsidize that, either through regulation changes that lower the cost of developing a home here in Iowa City, by offering money that literally offsets the cost of developing a home by buying land now that we intend to develop in the future because it's cheaper to buy now than to buy later, to have a plan that addresses all these things that we not only look at, but follow through on.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
Yes, I will just echo what a number of people have said. There is no single solution to solving the affordable housing crisis, whether homeownership or rentals. What we do need to do and lean into is to leverage our partnerships with experts who are already doing the work and help fund them. Additionally, as the mayor has pointed out, we are ourselves becoming developers. We need to continue to lean on the partners who know very well about how to do permanent supportive housing so that we can truly cover the gamut. As Amy mentioned, we're nowhere near getting the number of units that we need and we need them across the spectrum. For those who want affordable housing, we have to look not only at the number of units, but we have to look at the quality of the lives that those folks who want homes and need homes and deserve homes, as has been said, housing is a human right. We need to look at the quality of the type of homes and so many people want single family homes as well. So we need to have all of that on the gamut. And we also need to make sure that we are collaborating with people who are experts in this, who can help us understand how to stand this up.
Thank you. Mr. Abi Wissa.
We have 12,000 people who work in Iowa City and live outside Iowa City. Imagine that we have a community who can contain the people who live in Iowa City, who work in Iowa City, can live in Iowa City and can use the bus and reduce the number of parking in downtown Iowa City. The prices of housing in the last four years alone increased 30%. The highest in the state of Iowa. And that is due to the culture and regulation we have in the state of, in Iowa City. I think we have to have a community with high density. Similar things are happening around the other cities and we need to be a leader in that. I've seen many commercial space on the east side of town without apartments on top of that. There is, there are tools in our hand and it's happening around the cities, surrounding cities. We can do it here too.
Thank you. Okay, for our next question, if the local option sales tax does not pass, what will you cut? And we'll start with Mr. Teague.
Well, I do hope that the local option sales tax do pass because it's some great opportunities for our community. But if it doesn't, I, you know, I really think that we have to look at our budget. And me personally, you know, there are some things that are on our CIP that is roads and that type of stuff, which that's the number one thing that most people talk to me about and I think my other counselors about is fix my street. But I think some of those will probably be the things that I will look at because there are some things I'm not willing to compromise, things that are human rights that I'm just not willing to compromise and to decrease that funding for. So I think if someone was to ask me, like if we were approached with that, I think I would be looking at some road projects that we would just have to delay.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen.
Thank you. Yeah, again, let me echo the fact that I hope it does, it does pass. And again, I think what Mayor Teague said, you know, I agree. There are some things that we can't, human rights related things that we have to hold the line on. When it comes to other cuts though, when we come into a process like that and having been, and some of you have probably been in places like that and situations like that in your workplace, that's a very, very weighty decision. So if it's road projects or if it's other improvements or if we start looking at cuts in departments, that's the kind of process that I would go into without having a decision made ahead of time and learning everything that needs to be learned in order to make the best decision possible. However, that said, I have a lot of faith in the people of Iowa City. And I think as I talk to people out on the doors, I think there's a greater and greater understanding of what a benefit this could be to our community. So fingers crossed.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky.
Yeah. I guess the way I see lost is that especially when it comes to funding for affordable housing, funding for our community partnerships, if and when this pass, when it passes. My, my hope and my intention would be that the funding that comes from lost is additive. It's not replacing. So I first want to say that, that like the money that is coming from this, I don't see us investing less in the general fund into affordable housing. I see this as additive. So that's a little bit of a flip of your question, but I feel like it's worth saying. And I would feel disappointed if we didn't treat it that way. If we said, we have affordable housing money and so now we're going to take it out of the general fund, that would be massively disappointing to me. I would approach budget cuts in the same way I approach budget cuts in my job every day. I'm an executive director, so this is what I do. And that's by first protecting our biggest priorities, going in and making sure that our funding that supports our strategic priorities is safe and protected. Then comes the hard questions of what can wait, what needs to happen right now, and what can we talk about that may need to be cut completely.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
Well, first and foremost, what we won't be cutting is essential services. And one of the things that also is, I know it too well personally, is the last thing I'm willing to do is to cut staff. They're working too hard and doing too many creative and innovative things with not enough capacity. So those are some things I would want to protect and to make sure that within the community, people still have the services that they need. I tend to think that this would be sort of downsizing by a thousand cuts. I do not see a particular component. As I've said before, I look at specific instances and situations. And so it may be that there is a road that needs to be delayed in terms of its reconstruction or betterment, but I would need to actually see the specifics rather than saying as a blanket thing. I feel that that's the only responsible thing to do is we look at harder and hardest decisions is to be disciplined, but then also to look specifically at what's in front of us rather than just make a call to say, well, that project or that type of project is no longer on the table.
Thank you. Mr. Abi Wissa.
It is a regressive tax and the city council have negotiated some benefits to go back to the lowest income people. I mean, the state made it a law that half of that money has to go to property taxes, lowering property taxes. And I guess why we are in this place in the first place? Because the city of Iowa City has not been able to retain the industry, commercial and other services in Iowa City. I have lived in this town for 30, almost 30 years. I started this, my career with Iowa DOT when I was working for, General Growth came to town and they opened the Corridge Mall 25 years ago. And most of the businesses went from Iowa City to Correville. And Iowa City is still bleeding till now and we are losing the five cents, let alone the one cent. There is lots of issues to consider when we are cutting, but we need also to expand our tax base.
Thank you. Ms. Reinen.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot. I've gotten a lot of questions particularly from students on campus about lost and I feel good about some of the reassuring answers I've been able to give them. I think if lost weren't to pass, which I hope it does, I would really hope that we could think about public safety, including public health initiatives. Because I think if we think about how public safety and the safety of our communities is amplified by public health efforts, I think we would feel more comfortable diverting some of the funds that we've seen go toward our policing forces and be used for things like affordable housing, which we know makes our community safer, towards bike lanes, which we know make our communities safer. So if those cuts were to have to happen, I would hope that we could perhaps move some of that money from the police budget towards some of those initiatives that I think are particularly aligned with public health.
Thank you. Our next question, which we got a lot of from the audience, is, I don't know how to, I got to sum it up here. Basically, what would you do if the National Guard troops are deployed to Iowa City and how would you work to protect Iowa Cityans from ICE harassment and detention? We'll start with Mr. Harmsen.
Nothing like having a little head time on a question like that. One of the things, back when I used to wrestle, is I always wanted to win and come out on top. And one of the things I did not do is tell my opponent what I was going to do ahead of time. So as much as I would love to say we're going to do A, B, C, and D, I think that would be a mistake. However, we also need to look at what's going on with the National Guard and why they're sending people in. And that's to recognize that they're targeting specific communities right now. It's the immigrant community. As a city, what I can talk about is how we flipped the script on that. We fight the misinformation and we continue fighting it with things like our proclamations and showing up for each other and showing up for each other and doing that together. Like we saw here in Iowa City after the abduction by ICE just about a little over a week ago, the next day Iowa City showed up. That's what we keep doing. They want us to be fearful, we be brave. They want us to prod us into violence, we show up with nonviolent protest and for each other.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky.
Yeah, thank you. I feel like this is probably the elephant in the room, right? There, the thing that we hoped would never happen, happened. And I feel like that here in Iowa City, right across the street. I was vulnerably and honestly, I was pretty surprised to not see it on a city council agenda tomorrow. I think the reality is that we have to be willing to name what's happening out loud, plainly, even if we don't have all the answers, right? We have to be willing to put it on agendas and listen to public comment and hear that people are scared or that people are angry. And then we need to take that information and develop a plan. I think as a resident, I feel most afraid that I don't hear our city government talking about what they would do. And that makes me worry that they're not planning at all. And so I think being as honest and transparent as we possibly can, even though we're afraid, even though it is hard to say the thing out loud, even though our hands are tied in so many ways, will be necessary, especially as things escalate.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
So making no bones about it, this is an intentional act to be traumatic to the most vulnerable communities who, and it's ripping apart entire communities. It's not just those who are most vulnerable. It is straight out of Project 2025. And so absolutely, we need to talk about it. We need to listen to those who are most vulnerable, those who are most scared, those who are simply scared. It's in the entire It's the entire community, and we need to come together for that. One of the things, someone asked me, "What is the city able to do?" And in some cases, the city is not the best equipped to do things like providing the trainings for Know Your Rights, or for doing legal observers. The city is not necessarily, government is not necessarily the trusted ally. We want to be, but if you really want to make sure that the information necessary, it is a community effort. And the city can be there as massive, as support, as helping spread the word, but we shouldn't necessarily be the driver in that for specifics like helping immigrants know their rights. They may not trust me. It doesn't mean that they won't trust everyone. We have Mayor Protam, who has been in the community, and she has built the trust.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Abi Wissa?
I am an immigrant, but this high-profile arrest is to scare us and to scare all of you, too. I look at the city council to take a leadership position, to culminate the reaction to this, this kind of action. Fight fire with fire. We are not going to push the line back and say that we cannot do this and we cannot do that. No, we can do it. The city council is the leader in this community. The city have resources which can be used to culminate the people, culminate the experts, and protect people who are arrested, and protect people who are going to be arrested before they are arrested. So we have a great responsibility, and as leaders in this community, I promise you that I will work with every single one of you, every organization, to do as much work as we can to oppose this effort. The more they push back, the more they will push more toward you guys. So first, it's us, the immigrants, and then everybody else.
Thank you. Ms. Reina?
Yeah, if the National Guard were to get deployed to Iowa City, and I was elected, I would still grab my gas mask, and I'd be in the streets, like I have been and like I will continue to do. The only difference is that if I'm not elected, I would be out there blocked up, so I'd be harder to ID, as I have been. And honestly, I'm frustrated to hear that councilors don't want to talk more about the actionable items they would take. That's one of the reasons I decided to run for city council in the first place, because I watched my transgender friends and my queer friends, myself as a queer person included, beg city council to do anything for years to protect their rights. And it wasn't until those actual transgender community members took their own time and made and wrote a resolution on their own, that city council voted on it. And so when I hear folks say, "We don't want to reveal our hands," what that means to me is, "We don't know what we're going to do." And I think that the social capital that a city councillor carries is important, and to be out there on the streets is one of the most important things we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So I'm going to answer the question at hand, but what you just said was very offensive to me, but I'll go on to the question at hand. So the question is, what will we do? I think building relationships with folks is most important. I have been in the community, many people to me in the community. The relationships that we have with the immigrant service providers have great relationships with them, and that is what I really think is most important. People want to see their elected officials right there, side by side with them, and giving them, in the moment, what they're going to do and be present. And also, there's many, many meetings happening outside of the council, the council chambers that happen all the time with our really trusted, you know, folks that are doing the day-to-day work with our immigrant communities. Every last one of those organizations, I have great relationships with. And there are certainly plans to make sure that when ICE come, there's a response.
Thank you. So I'm going to read this next question exactly, because it's wonderful. "My Uncle Steve is seventy-eight and disabled. He cannot drive as in, and is in love with ICPL. He spends his day there every single day and begged me to ask about two compelling requests: one, Sunday bus service, and two, expanded library hours. If elected, what would you do to support special citizens like Uncle Steve?" And we'll start with Ms. Hospodarsky.
Yeah, I think the two suggestions that were mentioned were great. I think the Fair Free Bus Project is a great example of something that we've done to make a service that the city provides more accessible to many. I think that is a good example of, like, step one, then what, right? I tend to live in the world where I think, "What next?" Right? So looking at how we expand services like the Fair Free Bus Stop, so is it functioning for everyone? With this question, not having a service on Sundays, to me says, "It's not functioning for everyone," right? So looking at maybe expansion of hours, expansion of funding for things like the library, I, too, spend a lot of time in Iowa City Public Library. I think also asking people, asking residents, what would make their lives more fulfilling here in Iowa City? What services that could we provide that would help special people like Uncle Steve, right? I think being willing to be curious and listen is the first step in that process.
Thank you. Ms. Alter?
Actually, for, ever since I've been on, ever since I've been on council, sorry, we have talked about expanding hours for Sunday service, and it's met with limited success, or saying, "Not now," or "There's not enough need for it." I think that this is a place, actually, where councilors can push back a bit to talk to, okay, the data may show X, Y, and Z, however, we keep hearing from people, right? So we have to always keep in mind the difference between people and data, and sometimes that actual benefit is going to be something that the people will find, rather than whether it's a cost-benefit analysis. So Sunday service is something that we need to continue to look at as we look at what's next for bus, for bus service. Additionally, I am a massive user of the library, and so I'm all in favor of it having expanded hours. As we know, though, cuts have been huge, and the library fund itself was excised from, at a state level. And so we need to continue to look at balancing need of budget along with the desires of what people want, and try to find a way to help the people.
Thank you. Mr. Abi Wissa?
We are a growing community, and that's normal to have a growing, also, services. One of those great services are Sunday service. We are disconnected on, from buses on Sundays. And that does not help the connectivity of the city. I'm a transportation engineer, and I know that people, when they depend on something, they want it to be available to them all the week. We are not a Sunday-off community anymore. We are a huge community, and we need services on Sunday. So that is a demand that I will work with the city council and, and make sure that we can move forward in that direction. The library hours, same thing. We are a growing community. Also, we have more needs, and the library has other expenditures, but also expanding their hours in the downtown location is essential for, for the service to this community. And I want to thank Uncle Steve for that, because he's my uncle, too.
Thank you. Ms. Reina?
Yeah, I mean, I, as a librarian, I'm thrilled to hear so much love for the Iowa City Public Library. And I, I mean, I agree with what everyone has said. I think expanding bus services onto Sundays is important, particularly, I think, when we're talking about housing for students. I know so many students who would live further away from campus if they knew that they'd be able to get to activities on Sundays. I think the bus services not working on Sundays are very limiting for folks. And as far as expanding hours at the Iowa City Public Library, I would also love to see that happen. I, I've been really curious, as I've been running, about where we can really find strategic ways for the university to partner with the city more often. I think there are already some really great programs in place creating those partnerships, and especially for librarians, you know? Working at the Iowa City Public Library is like a coveted job post-graduation. So I'd be really curious to see if there were maybe some ways we could add more apprenticeship opportunities to the library, or things like that, to create some of these expanded opportunities and operation hours without increasing cost exponentially.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So life happens, definitely on Sundays in Iowa City. There's a lot happening, and most folks want to be a part of it, but we, many can't, especially when we're thinking about those that ride seats. Seats are, you know, the Johnson County transportation that really helps our seniors and persons with disabilities, but many of them, they don't have the funds to take an Uber or any of those type opportunities. So it is pretty critical that we, you know, began to seriously look at that. The council has looked at it. We just finished our, you know, pilot a year ago with our free transit, and that has been a discussion that we continue to have, you know, how can we expand Sunday and actually evening overnight services, because we have folks that work. So those conversations are happening, and I look forward to the next conversation on council about that.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen?
Thank you. First of all, a quick shout-out to the Iowa Public Library Board, which actually does a wonderful job of taking the resources that they have and setting up things and figuring out the questions of, like, hours and all of those kinds of things, and how they use that money. And congratulations to the new library director. One thing, too, our council, I think, has been really good at is making sure that even though the state took away the library fund, the, the piece on your property tax bill to fund libraries, we've committed to making sure that we continue to fund the library out of our general budget. On the Sunday service, one of the, I think, one of the things we do as council is we set the priorities and we work with, together with our staff. That's how we got the fair free service. We had that as one of our priorities in our strategic planning process. And then when we had the ARPA funds, they came to us and said, "We could do this." We approved it, it worked, then we continued to approve continued funding for that. They know that our priority is, not that next priority is the Sunday service, and looking at various models are already underway, whether it looks exactly like a bus service or if there's other kinds of ride-on-demand or other kinds of services. So that's, I mean, as long as we continue as a council to keep, keeping that as a priority, I have high hopes that we'll get there.
Thank you. Okay. "The city's climate action plan seems to mostly depend on Mid-American energy, continuing to build renewable energy, instead of the city taking substantive, substantive action like building its own solar systems as Johnson County has. Please share your thoughts on Iowa City and climate action." And we'll start with Ms. Alter.
Actually, the good news is that we are a very aware community. We have dropped our greenhouse gas emissions from almost one hundred and forty thousand metric tons to seventy-five thousand metric tons, and we've already reached our 2030 Due to, actually, sorry, let me put my notes here. One of the things that I'm actually really excited about, that has nothing to do with Mid-American energy, is that we have invested in a renewable gas digester, which is going to turn methane and CO2 into renewable gas for fuel or electricity generation. This is huge. It's a regional thing. We're getting it stood up so that we can turn waste gas into renewable energy that has nothing to do with Mid-American. It's entirely Iowa City-driven. So I guess that's part of my answer. A lot of this has to do with, how do we deal with residential work to bring down, you know, to recycle rather than just turn to waste? Transportation is a piece of this, and I think that just, we need to understand that it's all parts of a whole, but this gas digester is a big, big piece.
Thank you. Mr. Abi Wissa?
We are living on a sinking ship, so we need to change the model, basically, to live in a more sustainable matter. Sustainability can also provide opportunities, and we will need to look into more opportunities to partner with, with different people to advance the sustainable lifestyle we have. Communities, transportation is a big, huge, also, burden on the, on the carbon footprint. And we need to improve on the transportation system connectivity in Iowa City and have neighborhoods which are livable neighborhoods connected to each other and have people have services locally. They don't have to drive five, six, ten miles to find something to buy. We can have a model in Iowa City that it's close to each other. On, on the energy part, I think our homes can be improved. I know the city have had some, some programs to improve the, the insulation of some of the houses. We need to do a little more of that, and we need to educate our public to also reduce their footprint as much as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Reina?
Yeah, I, I met with Sarah Gardner a few weeks ago when I decided to run. I've been, I've been trying to meet with some different department heads, and I think one thing she told me that I'm excited about is just how aware the community is of climate action in general. We have like an, a disproportionate number of community members who are engaged with that issue, which is great. I think when we think about the question, and we think about why so much of our climate action plan revolves around Mid-American energy, it's because they're a utility provider. And so I think if you want to see the city be able to take increased action on climate action, we need to think about going from privatized utilities to public utilities. And so if I'm elected, I would be really excited to work with Councilor Y Line on hopefully bringing some of his ideas about public utilities to fruition, or at least laying the groundwork for future, future councils to do that. I think that's a massive way that we can take agency over our own climate output, similarly to how the city becoming a developer will allow us to have more agency over building affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Teague?
So, we have a Climate Action Commission, and I would encourage you all to see, I'll read some of their minutes, I read their minutes, I don't look at the videos, but I read their minutes, and they're doing a lot. And education is a huge part of what they do with the community members, and that's why we're seeing just a high, a higher increase when it is per capita of folks really buying into this climate action, because a lot of it has to do with how people act. How do they act in their daily, daily life? And I think that is something that Iowa City should be very proud of. We are very climate action-minded when it comes to operations at the city on every level, and we try to, you know, on some of our buildings, when we do renovations, to make sure that people see some of the projects that we're doing. Exactly, Mid-American, there are the folks that provide our energy within our community. We don't have anyone else really in our community. And so, yes, they're going to be the most folk that is most visible, but we did have an opportunity, and that was crushed a few years ago about bringing in some, some solar, so, but there's more opportunities coming.
Mr. Harmsen?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to push back very gently on the question itself, just to make sure that we understand that while Mid-American is an incredibly important partner and has helped us get really a lot closer to our goals, I don't want to devalue the work of the Climate Action Commission, because they do an incredible amount of work in addition to helping us form our strategic plan. And if you take a look at every proposal that comes before council, there is almost inevitably some discussion of how this fits our climate action plan. So this is ever in front of us, and it's something we always think about. In addition to the projects that my fellow candidates have mentioned, I think it might even be on this upcoming agenda, talking about getting some more electric buses. As you might know, our first round of electric buses, that company went out of business, but we were willing to experiment and try. Now we're looking at some from the same company we get our current buses from, so a company that's been around for a much longer time. The reason we didn't go with them before is because their older models wouldn't fit in our current bus barn, and so we had to go with a different company. Now their new models are, will fit, and so we can, we can look at a company that's got a much longer track record. So I'm really excited about that.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky?
Our, our city has a climate action plan. You'll hear me talk about this a lot. We have plans that I think are really, really great, one of which is our climate action plan. And one of the things I like best about that plan is it actually does a really good job of viewing this pretty holistically. When I talk to city staff, each one of them have climate-related goals, regardless of what department they're working in. And I think that is a massively helpful way to approach big projects or big problems like this, is to, like, embed it into almost everything that we do. So I do appreciate the way we've approached it so far. The second part of that is keeping our foot on the gas, right? Being open to more projects that pop up, being open to possibly exploring things like public utilities, finding ways that we can untie our hands and build something new when we need to the most.
Thank you. Let's see. "The use of ARPA funds for gun riddance, gun violence prevention and intervention efforts has helped reduce gun violence per capita in our community. Now that those funds have run out, how do you plan to support and fund these efforts in our community going forward?" And Mr. Abi Wissa, we'll start with you.
There are many issues about gun and the ownership of guns in this country. I know it's a constitutional right, and, and people do misuse them. However, I think that the, the, our, our community is, is not the, the number one threat to our community. I think it's important to fund the police to handle the gun threats or the gun violence in Iowa City. However, I think there are deep embedded reasons for the people who might be using those guns. Mental health is, is a huge area, need to be improved. Housing is an area of stability, needs to be improved, and there are many ways... And there are many ways to handle this problem without heading it directly. We have to look into the deep issues of, of, of the violence and then try to address it. For example, the majority of our inmates are black and brown and the majority of this room here in Iowa City is not. So there is injustices in our system and we need to look deeper into our, the causes before we look at the solution.
Thank you. Ms. Reinen.
Yeah, this is a great question. And honestly, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not 100% sure where that funding to keep up those efforts would come from. I do know that it's important to keep up those efforts. And so I guess talking a little bit about, as somebody who doesn't have as much experience as some of the other folks sitting up here, I'd love to just kind of paint a picture for how I'd go about finding that information to help make a decision. I think one thing I've learned running so far is that city staff is incredibly helpful and has been really awesome at providing me with information when I've wanted it to learn more about an issue. So I think first and foremost, leaning on city staff to see what solutions they've come up with or what they think would be the best option is always a great route to take. In addition to that, I think doing your research is really important. So I'd be curious to see other case studies of similar sized cities or cities with similar demographics that have had to take alternative options. And then ultimately I would weigh those with city staff recommendations and I'd move forward from there. But regardless of how that funding happened, I do think it's incredibly important to continue funding those measures that prevent gun violence.
Thank you. Mr. Teague.
So this is a multi-faceted opportunity, I think, that our community has. One, I'm going to say we need to continue to invest in our young folk because that's going to be so vitally important. Exposure and opportunity for young people, it really keeps them out of the street, it keeps them active. You know, I think every young folk, every young person should have an opportunity if they want to experience some things like dance and football, whatever the, whatever the things are, swimming, we have a great swimming at, giving swimming lessons at our rec centers. But there's so many different opportunities and I think it just can't be just one organization. It has to be full throttle. There are also trusted messengers for, for older folks that we need, we have that through the, through the county and public health right now where they go out and they talk to would be offenders to try to, you know, change that opportunity in their lives and give them some hope to really go towards.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to make just a comment that our current gun laws in this state are out of control. They, I'm not anti-gun, but I think the permissiveness in public spaces is something that we can do without and should have, shouldn't have to worry about in the first part. Now, back to the situation that we're in, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And just like Mayor Teague had mentioned, the programs that we support to help with youth, also in partnering with the county with the crime violence prevention and intervention sorts of efforts are really, really important. When all of those efforts to prevent don't, you know, when we still have some violence, I just want to give a shout out to our Iowa City Police Force, which has done a really good job of clearing those cases. So when we do see gun violence in the city, they spend the time and resources and for, you know, many, many times we'll see in pretty short order, people making arrests. And when somebody fires a gun in my city, I think that that's, that's a completely appropriate response and we need to make sure that that continues.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky.
Yeah, I think when funding dries up or when programs are not available or when legislation changes in a way that we wish they didn't, we have an opportunity to maybe broaden the way that we view things like safety. So investment in things like food security, investment in housing, investment in public spaces, investment in lighting, investment in, all these things indirectly lead to a safer environment, a safer community, maybe even directly if we want to say it that way. I think sometimes when something gets taken out of our toolkit, we just need to be able to broaden out and find other ways to get the result we're looking for. And I think this is one example of that, is that if we could reposition the way we think about things, we actually could find solutions to these problems that lessen gun violence without the need necessarily for legislation, though that would be ideal. So when faced with a limitation, rather than saying, "There's nothing we can do," I think looking at the things we can do to directly reduce violent crime numbers or gun crime numbers is something that we should look at.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
May I ask a question first? Can you repeat the question?
Sure can.
At the end of it all.
Guns, guns are the leading cause of death. Oh, no, I had another gun related. Okay. The use of ARPA funds for gun violence prevention and intervention efforts has helped reduce gun violence per capita in our community. Now that those funds have run out, how do you plan to support and fund these efforts in our community going forward?
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, the CIV, the Community Violence Intervention Program started in the county and the ICPD has participated as a regular part of that program. It has been nationwide, this is an incredibly effective program. In Baltimore, gun violence went down in double digit percentages. I mean, it's, it is effective. So though it started out as an ARPA program, I am 100% on board with us continuing this as a permanent program. And again, this is housed in the county, but this is an instance where we can actually collaborate effectively. And I don't think the cost is that much. We actually have seen that this is a part of diversion efforts that are successful. And so I think that this is every reason for us to very specifically maintain this program because it is already proving to work here in the community and it has been actually nationwide. It's, it's extraordinary. So as council, we figure out the priorities and then we direct staff to then work out the details. And I don't mean that in an off the cuff kind of way. I just mean that we have to show our, what our priorities are and I think this is one we need to maintain.
Thank you. Our last question tonight. If you could accomplish only one thing for the city next year, what would it be? And we'll start with Ms. Reinen.
Whoa, I would like to accomplish everything I want to accomplish. No, um, gosh, that's so hard because I think my, my immediate answer was of course like build permanent supportive housing, but that's not going to happen in one year. I think then my answer would be to, hmm, hmm, okay, speed run. I think we need to, within the next year, I would love to see a plan to build a variety of types of permanent supportive housing with an actionable way to be in the process of securing land. Hopefully by then, you know, if we're, if we're public land, or excuse me, if we're public developers, we could start making those processes. But in general, I think making sure that in the next year we are laying that groundwork. And I think that starts with if the land isn't already acquired, acquiring the land and getting a commission or committee ready to really push that forward. So if I could speed run building permanent affordable, permanent supportive housing, I would, but we should at least lay the groundwork in this next year, I think, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Teague.
So I often go to schools and I talk to young folk and I ask them, "If you were mayor for one day, what would you do?" Now, I always get the, you know, give people candy all day and they'll do some great things. But the one thing that is most common that they say is I will make sure that people have a car, I will make sure that people have a house, I will make sure that people have food. They're talking about human rights. Now, transportation and the car may not be the, the number one thing. But if I was to tap into my young self, what would I do? I really think that I would have to say that build upon what we already started, which is that housing. That is, that has been the number one priority that this council has talked about in 2018. It was Bob Welsh and some more folks that was a part of the, that housing was a human right and a human rights city. They gave me material and I think housing was at the top because they wanted to create a human rights city. And so I would say housing.
Thank you. Mr. Harmsen.
If you'd asked me this question a year ago, I would have had a very different answer because we were in a very different country and a very different place. But if there's, if I had to pick my one wish that I could accomplish, and that is to keep our city together and to keep us working together and bring people together, even if we have our differences right now or we have differences of ways to want to do things, pulling us together so that we get to keep our democracy and get to keep voting for things like city council and the state legislature and federal offices. Right now, that is the most important thing for all of us. And if I'm, if I don't make it back on council, I'm going to keep doing that work like I've been doing for years and years and years. We've got to come together. We've got to be together as a community. Yes, we can argue with each other, we can argue with our friends, but we got to remember to fight against only our enemies and be very, very clear the difference between those two things.
Thank you. Ms. Hospodarsky.
Yeah, I think my major goal would be to infuse our culture with creativity and compassion and curiosity. I think we're in a moment where, when our city government meets us with, "Well, let me tell you what you don't know," or you're, "I disagree with you" because it's really hard to build a system that is connected, that is clear, that is able to respond to our city's needs. And so if we're talking about what's the major thing that I want to tackle, that's it. It's creating a culture where people feel welcomed into communication, where they know what's happening, where they're part of the decision-making, not because they showed up to talk to us, but because we went and talked to them or we invited them here, right? So I think a shift in the culture, instead of a fight, being more collaborative, finding ways to find ways to move forward, especially in the midst of feeling like we're stuck. I think instead of meeting these issues with frustration and anger and there's nothing we can do, meeting these issues with creativity and compassion and the desire to find the way forward is the most important thing we can do.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
There are several things. I am going to say that I wrote down, laying the groundwork and then you said it, but no. It is laying down the groundwork because being on council and actually sort of planning for this city and doing things, the runway is long and so we can't do things in a year. And that I know is a thing that can be frustrating, but it also is well worth it because if we think about our current state says, "Let's doge everything," right? We're going to cut costs and look at what has fallen out from that quick action. Some planning matters. So I'm really in favor of laying the groundwork. And one of the major things actually is to help build up our economic base by rejuvenating the east side with the Iowa City marketplace. That's been a blight for years. I want to see the path made for increased childcare options, both for those who might be able to become entrepreneurs and become childgivers professionalized, and then also for those who need it so desperately so that they don't have to quit, women don't have to quit their jobs and stay at home to take care of their children. Affordable housing, absolutely. I'm just going to stop because I was stopped. But no, I lay the groundwork.
Thank you. Mr. Abulissa.
We are living in a different, almost different country. We are being faced with challenges which we have not been faced before. Our, our city council was overseeing a truth and reconciliation commission. Finding the truth is uniting. The Bible says you'll know the truth and the truth will set you free. The reconciliation part of the, of the commission, the people on the commission were not able to reconcile between each other and the city council did not have the leadership to bring that council to a, to a fruition and to success. And they are, we are still waiting on a report. So we need to come, bring our city to reconcile with itself, talk to each other, I'll motivate all the groups to participate and have the, the different groups, I mean, as a reconciliation, we need to, to talk about all groups and we have to come together against what's coming from DC and elsewhere.
Thank you. Okay, we had a lot of questions we couldn't get to tonight and I'm sorry about that. Feel free to contact the candidates with your questions and I'm sorry we couldn't get to them all. You're a very curious audience this evening. So now we'll move on to our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement and we'll start with Ms. Hospodarsky.
Thank you. I am running for city council because I believe that local government works best when it's compassionate, when it's creative and when it's deeply connected to the people that it serves. I see a future in Iowa City where residents feel welcomed into decision-making, where creativity is used to take on and solve complex challenges and where true collaboration moves us from plans on paper to progress in real life. I bring experience that is different than what you already have on council. I bring lived experience as a single mom and a single income household and what that means in Iowa City. I bring extensive governance experience here in Iowa City. I know how to set the tone, I know how to draw the line between oversight and operations and I do it well. And I'm the only person, I think, that has experience answering to a board similar to a city council. In my day job and in the past five years, that's what I've done. I work as an executive director that answers directly to a board and my job is taking that vision and that oversight and turning it into real action, making things happen, allocating resources, directing staff. I build and manage a budget and I manage people all day, every day. And in the world of city council and the kind of government we have, that is most of the work. What do we do with our land? What do we do with our money? And how do we direct staff to carry out our vision? So I'm excited to kind of mix those experiences together, to bring my unique point of view and to get things done together as a city and as a council. Thank you.
Mr. Harmsen.
Thank you. And thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to all the people who are here tonight and all the people that are watching online. This participation in democracy is so very, very important and just by exercising our rights, we help keep our rights. So thank you for that. The last question kind of stole my thunder for what I was going to talk about because what I was going to talk about is the fact that my slogan is very simple. It's the same as it was four years ago, it's "Together." And I really believe that's what we need to be focused on. I believe that's how we make things happen. That's how we have been making things happen on the council for the last three and a half years since I've been on and before that. What I mean by that and some of the questions we've had tonight and a lot of the things we, that we've been talking about, there are particular parts of our community which are being specifically targeted and singled out by this current administration, both in Des Moines and in DC. And, you know, whether it is our LGBTQ plus community, whether it is immigrants, they are certainly bearing a brunt right now. But the reality is, these people are so awful. Everybody in this room is also part of that, people being targeted. If you're an educator, if you're a researcher, if you are a parent, if you are somebody who believes that you don't want to see yourself or people you care about get sick or even die from a vaccine presentable, preventable illness, if you are somebody who wants to see, you know, who's living on the streets, if you want to see people get fed, if you want to see opportunity, we are all under attack. And the only way we get out of this is if we recognize that and we pull together. And so that's the kind of message that I bring and I will, whether I'm on the council or not, I'm going to be working for those goals. But I hope that you will trust me to continue that kind of work as a member of the city council. And so I thank you again for being here. If you have any other questions for me, harmsonforcouncil.com and that's kind of a way to look at some more information, but also a way to reach out and contact the campaign. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Teague.
So as I said, this is my third go-round. Been here since 2018 and I'm the longest sitting counselor, which does explain the gray hair. I stopped dying it so that it can show all of his glory. I've earned it. But I'll tell you that the, the real reason why I want to run is because in this moment, in, in this year, I've been saying, "We all belong here." And, and it really goes to say that all the attacks that we've been seeing from the state feds, all that stuff is on our unhoused immigrants, our LGBTQ plus community and it's, you know, specifically our trans and our youth, trans youth. It is continuing and we're, they're not done, it's going to continue. And when I think about all the things that we've encountered together over the years since I've been here in 2018, there, it's been a lot. COVID, yes, that was, you know, a big thing, but there are more things that happened that really touched the lives of people here that this council had to deal with. When we think about Forest View and all the things that happened over there. So I've been a part of all of this and what I'm asking for is another opportunity to use that experience to continue to hear the voices of our community members, which I think I do a great job at. My experience really is caring for people. I've been caring for folks since my grandmother lived with us when I was 11 years old, since I cared for my aunt who had cancer when I was 13 years old, sleeping on her floor, making sure that, I didn't do no care, but just making sure that she had the, the water and somebody was present in her home. was present in her home. I see myself as a caregiver for this city, one that has some great experience, but ultimately one that will bring us all together. And I really believe that in this moment, experience is needed as we're gonna face a lot of more challenges.
Thank you. Ms. Ryne.
Yeah. One thing I haven't really talked about much tonight about why I'm running, wanting to run, is because part of Iowa City's strategic plan is figuring out how to keep young people in Iowa City and figuring out how to draw in more young people. And regardless of what political party you belong to, you hear politicians at the state level on both sides saying the same thing. We need more young people to stay in Iowa City and in Iowa, if you're thinking broadly. And I think that having a young person on city council is a way to ensure that that's happening. I think for a lot of young folks like myself, Iowa City looks progressive and feels progressive at times, but there's more to be done. And I think that having somebody who wants to stay in Iowa City in the long term, I want to raise a family here, I want to send my kids to public school here, and I want to make sure that this is a city that I feel confident doing that in. And so there are things that I am equipped to do that I don't think folks who have, you know, worked in the workforce for longer have as much knowledge about. So for example, I really think that to keep young folks here, we need to be implementing regulations on AI and making sure that AI data centers aren't being built here to keep our water quality intact, especially with the way our water system works, drawing from an aquifer with a limited resource. I think that in general, having a librarian on city council is a really good way to make sure that we have a measured, researched, evidence-based approach to the issues that we're tackling. And I'm really excited to see what I could bring to Iowa City and how that could affect my future here. I think that's a really exciting opportunity and I'm really hopeful that I get the chance to serve you all as a city counselor. And regardless of whether I am elected or not, I hope to continue as a big part of this community and I've loved meeting so many folks since I've started running and I really hope that I get to serve you all as your city counselor. Thanks again for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Abou Issa.
I, I lived in this community for 28 years. I actually moved to Iowa to live in Ames and I've heard about Iowa City and I, I'm very pleased to live in Iowa City. I think it's the best city in the state of Iowa and maybe surrounding states as well. And I wanna thank the city counselors and the people of Iowa City who brought us to this level. Maybe I've been critical a little bit, I ask for forgiveness too, and I ask you to, to answer my, my criticism with, with substantial evidence. I have a vision for Iowa City. I think we are in a great spa, location, but we can improve. I think we have challenges which are really coming at us at fast speed and we don't have time to waste. We have to have a community living together and shopping locally and building local economy. And as a transportation engineer, I've had the experience of dealing many, with many cities around eastern Iowa, and I've seen different models. And I think I can provide with a model which will improve on what we have here today. I know that the city have a strategic plan and that plan calls that we should be working with the, on education, for example. Education is a big part of our community and we need to be working with Kirkwood and the Iowa City School District. Guess what? Kirkwood is moved out of Iowa City. And the, the, the current council did not have the leadership to continue working with, with Kirkwood to provide the education needed for, between the university and, and technical work. And, and the city is lacking in many areas. We need to work in those technical areas to provide high-paying wages locally. I don't have to get my plumber from Benton or somewhere else. And that's happening in Iowa City. We don't have the services in Iowa City that we need in Iowa City. We need to bring the people who also work in Iowa City to live in Iowa City and provide communities for them to, to prosper. Thank you very much. And if you like me, vote for me.
Thank you. Ms. Alter.
Yes, thank you. And thank you again for taking time out of your evening to come here for an hour and a half and listen to us. This is immense and wonderful. It shows how much engagement the community has and honestly, the standard that we need to live up to. And I appreciate that. I'm asking for four more years because, as I said four years ago, I want to make daily life for residents better. And that takes a number of different looks. I've learned over the past four years that we have to be resourceful and adaptive. And what Iowa City looked like four years ago is not the same way it looks now, but yet needs are similar and we have to continue to address them. Without it wanting to, without wanting to sound like this is an excuse, as I said before, things can't happen like that simply because we want them to. We can't will change into existence. We can will change into existence over time and we can work for it, but we have to understand that to simply want something to change immediately doesn't mean we necessarily can do that. One of the things that I actually think is immense and wonderful and that I appreciate the most about Iowa City and that is unchanging is that our core and our values are the same and they're incredibly strong. And they are you. You manifest what is the best of Iowa City and so we need to reflect that in the policies and the actions that we take on and the projects that we do. I will say that one of the things that Iowa City can do, the government can do, is work on so-called meat and potatoes issues, right? And that these are the types of things that actually are going to serve and manifest our values. If we work on core issues like food insecurity and housing scarcity, those are core issues, they are meat and potatoes. If we worry about somebody who has, is driving over a pothole, right? If their axle gets cracked, then how are they gonna pay for it? So these things actually matter, whether it's small or large. And I think that what we need to do is to consider taking on all of these things at once. I hope that you will vote for me again so I have four more years to keep working with you on it.
Thank you to our candidates and to those of you in attendance tonight, those watching at home, and the Iowa City AV team for making this videocast and live streaming possible. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Also, you can find informational flyers on the local option sales tax ballot measures at the table behind me, and some candidates have information in, in the hallway. Remember to vote on or before Election Day, Tuesday, November 4th. Absentee ballots can be requested now through October 20th. Early voting begins October 15th. Check the Johnson County Auditor's page for the early in-person voting schedule. And good night and thank you all for coming.